When I'm sitting.
All right, we're ready to go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Mike is muted.
Michael, you're muted.
Good evening. Tonight is March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Mike Licklider and I serve as the superintendent of the Harwood Unified Union School District. I'm calling this meeting to order at six oh one P M. And this is an organizational meeting following our town hall meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. So I'm calling to order the newly seated Harwood Unified Union Board of Directors. I'm in counting it. I'm counting in attendance in the library, six board members. I'm counting five online with two members absent at the present moment. Uh, one of which Mike Bishop reached out to me and expressed that he's out of town. So uh, we have uh, twelve board members present. I'd like to ask at this point each board member present to introduce themselves, and I would ask that you share your name, the town you serve, and if you previously served on the board, when you were first elected or appointed. So that's always the test, remembering when you were elected or appointed. Uh, so we will start with the board member to my left, and that's Kristen Rogers.
Okay.
You.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Good.
Uh, my name's Kristen Rogers. Um, I am from Moretown. I was elected in uh, two thousand and nineteen, and this is my fifth year on the board. Did I hit all the? Okay.
Let's go to Ashley.
I'm Ashley Woods. I'm from Warren, and I have been on the board for one year, elected in twenty-two.
Kelly?
My name is Kelly Hackett. I was elected in March of two thousand and twenty, and this is my fourth year on the board.
J B.
Yes.
My name is J B Weir. I'm from the town of Waitsfield, and this is uh, my first year. I was just elected last week.
Bobby.
And I'm Bobby Rude, and I'm on the board from Waitsfield, and I was elected in March, two thousand and twenty-one.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two.
All right, Ben.
My name is Ben Clark, and uh, I have just been um, elected, and this is my uh, first night here.
And I see we've been joined by Marlena Tuckman Fisher from Fisherman from uh, Waterbury. So since we've introduced everyone who's in person, I will look on my screen and go in order of what I see appearing on my screen, and the first person there is Tori.
All right, my name is Tori. I serve in Waterbury, and I was elected in two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, and uh, Tori is from Waterbury, and we have Cindy Sanning.
Hi, I'm Cindy Sanning, and I'm from Ducksbury, and I was first elected in two thousand and twenty-one.
Danielle.
Hello, I am Danielle Duquette. I represent Facetown on the board, and I was just elected last week.
Okay, Jonathan.
I'm Jonathan Young. I serve the town of Warren, and I was elected in two thousand and twenty-one, going into my third year now.
Okay, then we have Jake, Life, and Marlena.
Hey, I'm Jake Pittman. Um, I was elected just a few months ago, or I was appointed just a few months ago, and am now serving um, a three-year seats uh, currently.
Hi all, uh, I'm Life Legaros. I'm from Ducksbury, and I was appointed in May, two thousand and twenty-two.
Hello, everyone. I'm Marlena Tucker Fishman, and I was elected in two thousand and twenty-one.
Excellent. Thank you. We have thirteen board members present, and our first order of business tonight is to elect the chair. And first, I do want to confirm that all members present have been sworn in by your town clerk. If there's anyone who has not been sworn in by your town clerk, if you could please uh, indicate so by raising your hand. Excellent. I think we have thirteen board members who are eligible to vote. So at this point, uh, I'll open up the selection of the chair. Are there any nominations? And if uh, if you're online and want to nominate someone, please raise your hand. I see Ashley as the first person to to uh, raise their hand.
I'd like to nominate Kristen Rogers for board chair.
Okay, Kristen Rogers has been nominated as board ch- as the board chair. Uh, Roberts Rules of Order does not require a second, however, it is permissible for a board member who would like to do so out of support of the candidate to offer a second. So I see a second from Bobby Rude and some other hands indicated. Uh, Jonathan, I see a lot of support there. Um, so first I'll ask Kristen, would you be willing to serve?
Yeah, yes, I would be willing to serve.
Okay, we have one member nominated, and she's willing to serve, Kristen Rogers. Are there any other nominations for chair? We're looking for other nominations for chair. Uh, Roberts Rules of Order does not require a motion to close nominations. Nope, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Marlena.
Uh, question and a nomination. To nominate, to nominate someone, did you have to inform them beforehand?
We still can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
I can hear.
Okay, I'm talking. My question.
There, there we go. Okay, go ahead.
My question was, do you have to inform a potential nominee that you're gonna nominate them beforehand?
You do not, but they, they will have to be willing to accept the nomination.
Of course. Okay, in that regard, um, I would like to nominate Life for uh, for chair.
We have a nomination for Life Legaros for chair. Again, uh, Roberts Rules does not require a second, however, if someone wishes to do so, uh, that is perfectly acceptable. So I'll ask Life, uh, if you are willing to serve.
Uh, I, 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 my wife would just kill me. Marlena, I'm so honored. I'm very tempted to nominate you back. You know, I love you and you do a great job, but I also know that you're a very, very busy person, so thank you.
Okay, Life was nominated but is not willing to serve, so we have currently one uh, board member. And again, Roberts Rules does not require a motion to close nominations, but it's customary to make sure we ask at least three times that there are other nominations. So are there other nominations for the position of board chair? Okay, hearing no other nominations, the nominations for board chair are closed. Uh, is there any discussion? And I will say it's customary in my uh, my uh, viewing of previous board meetings and, and board reorganizations for individuals speak about the qualifications of the candidate. Uh, that's not necessary, but if someone would like to speak to Kristen and her background and qualifications, and uh, we'd be certainly happy to hear that as part of the discussion. Jonathan.
I full, full-heartedly support Kristen as chair. She's done an amazing job of moving business along without any strife or controversy, and that is no small task, given um, the conditions we serve under right now. So I think she's done a great job, and I'm sure she will continue to do so.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. I also saw Kelly Hackett had her hand raised. Kelly?
I uh, I support Kristen uh, a hundred and ten percent. Uh, she has always been very organized and prepared for every meeting and um, stays on top of all tasks that uh, the chair needs to um, and um, I support her a hundred percent.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other individuals who wish to speak? Or any other discussion items regarding nomination for the chair? Ben?
Um, so I, I just want to uh, take this opportunity to say um, that uh, my uh, history with uh, Kristen is such that I find her to be a, a very warm, inviting person who is absolutely terribly uncomfortable with having people say this about her out loud. Um, she is uh, an amazingly um, awesome uh, listener. Um, she knows when to say yes, she knows when to say no. Um, but she also knows uh, when to change her mind, and that makes her an extraordinary leader, and uh, I'm very, very happy to serve on this board with her.
Thank you, Cindy.
I, I'd just like to ditto everything that people have said. I uh, Kristen was just a huge help to me when I came onto this board. Um, supportive in every way, and I think she's done a great job. I, I think it was a, it was a hard move, and, and I think she took it on and has done a great job, so I support her wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no other discussion, it's also customary if the person chooses for the nominee, uh, Kristen Rogers to say a few words. Kristen, would you like to say a few words?
I appreciate appreciate all those really very nice, kind words. Ben is right. I feel very uncomfortable hearing anything. I just, it's just not me. But um, if I uh, you know, became the chair again, that's a very big honor and privilege. Um, and uh, a task that I look really forward to doing for the next year, so thank you.
Any other discussion before we move to a vote? Okay, so I hear no other nominations. We have one nomination for Kristen Rogers. The member is willing to serve. Uh, and since there's no other candidates, Roberts Rules and Remote Law permit a voice vote. Since we have individuals present and at home, I would ask uh, for a show of hands, and for you to keep them raised until we can account for all thirteen members present. Um, so all in favor of Kristen Rogers as board chair, please signify by raising your hand. We have five in person. We have all members online. Uh, so we have at this point twelve affirmative votes. Thank you very much. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Is that an abstention, uh, Kristen?
Yeah, I'm not voting for myself.
Okay, so we have, we, we have twelve votes uh, in favor, one of so uh, uh, Kristen Rogers is the board chair for the coming year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. So I will uh, take over for the rest of the meeting. The next order of business is to elect a vice chair, so I would be looking for nominations for a vice chair. Ben, I'm gonna uh, mute my
I would like to nominate Kelly Hackett.
I'll second. Second.
Kelly, are you willing to serve as vice chair?
Yes.
Um, is there any discussion? Anybody would like to say anything? Uh, Jonathan?
I would just like to say I fully support Kelly as, as vice chair, and I hope we can keep the dream team together.
Um, anybody else would like to say anything? Cindy, go right ahead.
Okay, I just would like to say Kelly's done a great job. It was quite an, an, a, a feat getting how to do all of the technology to go with it, and she just hung right in there and has done a great job, and I think it would be awesome to have her doing it for another year. Thank you, Kelly.
And I guess I should also ask, were there other nominations? I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. Were there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, is anybody else would like to say anything? Before I ask Kelly if she would like to say anything? Kelly? Oh, Ashley? Do you want to use mine?
It's in your audio. I just want to also throw my support behind Kelly. Um, I think Kelly and Kristen have done a great job. I was new on the board, had never done anything this sort of formal, and I feel like they've made that really easy for all of us and have kept the energy really high and positive, and um, I for one am super glad they even want these jobs again. So yay, Kelly.
Kelly, would you like to say anything?
Uh, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it, and I also appreciate the um, the patience that uh, former board members had as I fumbled through some of the um, the vote tallies, and hopefully it is a little more seamless um, this coming year. So thank you very much for your support.
Any other comments before we were to vote? All those in favor of Kelly Hackett as vice chair, go ahead and raise your hands. Two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, yeah, four, okay. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Are there any noes? I'm assuming Cindy. And Jake, are you, you put your hands down? Are you? If you're, unless you're a no, any abstentions? Okay, Kelly? Welcome back, vice chair. Okay. No, I don't, usually the chair doesn't vote, but if the, the chair, if the chair did vote, I would. Okay. I think it'll be okay. I think it'll be okay.
And if you don't mind me saying one word, I do want to comment to the board that um, just to talk a little bit about the character of both individuals since the election occurred. Two days ago, I received an email with a list of, it, it felt like thirty items. I think it was only ten that said, uh, we have an election coming up. We are no longer, we will no longer be the chair, and if there is another chair uh, vice chair, please let them know these things uh, and, and laying out the important things that have to occur in, in the short term. So I just wanted to recognize that since that was something not shown by everyone.
I just want to be prepared and make sure nothing is missed, because there, you know, that's just my brain work. It also lets Mike know the inner workings of how I think. Okay, so the next thing is elect a finance officer, officer, and actually that is your, that's what you're currently doing. Do you want to tell everybody a little bit about what that is? And we're all, just to preface it, we'll be looking for an assistant finance officer. You guys will be, two people would be sharing this, this job, but Ashley, if you want to give some background information on it?
Sure. So I've done it for the last year, and I um, Theresa Membrino asked me to do it. She was it, and she was in, leaving board members, so I took it on, not really knowing anything about it, and being absolutely horrific at math. So it's not a math gig, really. It sounds like it is, but really what it is, is every two weeks, the central office writes, you know, we were just at a forty-five million dollar budget. Well, we spend the forty-five million dollars, and every two weeks, the finance officer or the assistant finance officer, we alternate. So really the commitment is once a month. Um, you go to the central office, which is by the playing fields in Waitsfield, and you go through enormous stacks of um, statements and what the checks are for. Uh, really, the Heidi today at the office, the woman who handles you when you come in, explains to me that it isn't really about math. It's really about making sure that that money is getting spent, and that uh, things are being done in a timely way, that there's a lot of checks and balances, and there absolutely are. Those ladies are all brilliant. I mean, I, it's amazing, and, and, and basically the, the we spend a lot of money. We spend somewhere between a two-hundred thousand and six-hundred thousand dollars every two weeks. We have to, to spend forty-five million dollars in a year. So I would say that I'm happy to give it up. I feel like I've learned a lot, and I, and I recommend it to anyone who is interested in understanding how that flow looks and how much things cost today for this school district, because it is an eye-opener, not gonna lie to you. It's um, it's um, it's shocking on a lot of levels how much money we spend on various things, and um, I kind of talked to Jake a little and piqued his interest about maybe being involved in finance officerness, but I'm happy to give it up. Some feels like there are.
There are two. What is the time commitment when you go at?
How, how? Takes, you know, it's really how much you want to spend there. I depend on the size of the stack. I spend between half an hour and a little over an hour once in a while, if it's a big, huge pile. But really, it's um, it's what you want to see and understand, and you can ask any question when you're there, and all those people that know the answers can give them to you, which is also, has been incredibly enlightening. So it's interesting, and it is once, if two people are doing it, it's once a month, and we cover each other. We have a little um, online schedule that, um, so we know when we're doing it, and if one of us needs to bow out, we will switch, or Kristen might step in and do it if we're both busy. So um, it is a team effort, um, and it's, it's interesting. Who is the current assistant? It was Lisa, but she's gone, so.
I did it before Ashley and Lisa took over, and it is quite fascinating. There are certain times of the year when they're, the stacks are a lot bigger, but for the most part, I agree, it's like a half an hour or forty-five minutes.
Yeah, just checking in, just checking in on what it looks like and how it's rolling out.
So are there people that are interested in doing this? If you are, go ahead and unmute yourself, and so Jake is. Um, it, Jake, you are?
Yep.
Okay, um, do we have anybody else that is interested in taking on this? Come on, guys, don't do it all at once. So is there anybody else? So, so so Bobby, you would be willing to as, 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 okay, so um, I would be looking to, for um, just an emotion, an emotion. She's um, um.
Let's leave that out of it.
A motion to elect a finance officer. Do you want?
I'm happily to make um.
Oh, I unmute what? Oh, turn my speaker on. Okay. Um, so do you want to make a motion?
Um, I'm to elect Jake Pittman as finance officer for March, twenty, twenty-three. Uh, to March, twenty, twenty-four. Uh, to the, oh, sorry, to reorganization meeting of the March, uh, of March, twenty, twenty-four.
Jake, you're willing to be the person? Okay, is there a second? Bobby, okay, discussion? All those in favor of Jake as the finance officer, throw it up in the air. Okay, um, anybody opposed? And anybody abstaining? Okay, okay, Jake, maybe, okay, so that's great. Jake, awesome. You're gonna enjoy it. It's so much fun. And I think the central office might be getting your chair, so that's even better. Okay, so next, the assistant finance officer. Ashley, do you want to make?
I sure will. I will make a motion to elect Bobby Rude as the assistant finance officer for March, twenty, twenty-three to the reorganization meeting in March, twenty, twenty-four.
Is there a second? J B? Um, Bobby, you're willing? Right, um, any discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of electing Bobby Root as the assistant finance officer, throw it up in the air. Okay. Okay, anybody know? Or abstaining? Okay, congratulations. Would you be willing to take both of them in to show them the ropes? Okay.
It's in two weeks. I just did it today, so it's not, it's every two weeks, and it's right before the meeting.
And the reason that we said um, to reorganizational meeting is because she had to go in and do that today to do it. So that's just to cover us until next year. Okay, so the next one is to elect a recording secretary. Bobby, was that you before? That is a backup person to Carol Chamberlain, who takes our minutes. So this would be if she's absent, we would just need somebody to be the Carol Chamberlain for the meeting. Does anybody would like to be that person as the backup person? And just so you know, in the last year, we have not needed a fill-in person. It's literally just in case. So Tori? You would be, okay.
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
So would anybody like to make that motion, Ashley?
This is sitting right next to us. I will make a motion to elect Tori Paravella to be the Harwood Union Unified School District Board Recording Secretary for March, twenty, twenty-three to the reorganization meeting in March, twenty, twenty-four.
Is there a second? Bobby, what? Um, any questions, discussion? Okay, throw your hand up if, if, if everybody is good with Tori being the backup re-person, Carol Chamberlain, recording secretary. Okay. Anybody, uh, no? Or anybody opposed? Or abstain, that's the same thing. No one opposes. Okay. Okay, Tori, that's great. Thank you so much. Um, so next on the agenda is to elect the representative of the Central Vermont Career Center Board. Jonathan, would you able to just give us a little bit of lowdown on what that is and the time commitment, please?
Of course. So the Central Vermont Career Center uh, is a recently started district of its own that used to be under the Berry uh, school district, but they have broken off and started their own district, which I was very proud to be a part of the mounting and starting of that uh, school board. And they are currently, you know, they already have a very good system in place, and what they've basically done is they've just had to codify a lot of those things that they were doing on their own with Berry. And now they are uh, continuing to explore options to grow the district and include more, you know, they're at ma- almost max capacity. The programs are incredibly successful. Uh, basically, it's going incredibly well. And the time commitment that I've had is basically they meet once a month. There's occasionally a special meeting, and there are some committee groups that uh, meet here and there. But essentially, it's a, it amounts to a one board meeting amount, a month, which is roughly the same, the same length as our board meetings. Maybe a little shorter, again, because the system is pretty well-oiled already. Um, and it's been a, it's been a wonderful experience, and the people there are really dedicated to that uh, career center. And while I've super enjoyed it and would continue if no one was willing to step up, I feel somewhat guilty that I have not been able to give them the full energy and effort that I think they deserve. Um, while I don't think I've hurt the organization, I don't think, I think if somebody had the, the time and energy to really dig into it m- more than I have, I think that the, the organization would probably benefit from that. And uh, I can't speak more highly than about the, the superintendent Jody Emerson, and, and all the people on the board are just incredibly professional and incredibly dedicated to the Career Center, and uh, it's really impressive to me, uh, what they're doing.
Is that a Zoom option, or do they do like we do? You could go in person, or is it all Zoom?
It is, it's, it's in person and Zoom. I, I, that's one of the things I'm talking about as far as, I have not been physically to a meeting just because of my schedule and family obligations require that I, that I be here. And that's one of my disappointments, and I think that, you know, that, if there was someone that could get down there for one or two of these meetings, every, or every other, it would certainly benefit the uh, the, the board and the organization. So that's kind of, but yes, Zoom is perfectly they're down in, they're down in Berry at their location.
And what day, like what day of the week is it?
Usually the first Monday of the month. But the next meeting, for instance, is on the twenty-first of this month, which is when they will, the, which is when all the different people that have been assigned or have been nominated will, will be, will just, it's an organizational meeting, just like ours on the twenty-first. But that's only because they had to wait till all the various districts that they serve had this meeting before they can have their meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan, for that. Is there anybody, and this is just one year, so, um, this is going to happen again. So we worked it into being part of the reorganizational meeting. It's just a one-year term. Is there anybody that's interested in taking on this role? Ashley?
I would be interested in that.
Okay, Ashley is interested. Is there a, a motion? I won't ask you to do it, because. Yeah, do you want to make the motion? And I'll mute myself if you want to unmute.
Let me get to it. Oh, okay. Um, you ready? I move to elect Ashley Wood.
Woods.
Wood, Ashley Woods, to the Central Vermont Career Center Board Representative as the HUSD Board Representative from March twenty twenty-three to the reorganization meeting in March twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Is there a second? JB, okay. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of electing or appointing Ashley Woods to the Central Vermont Career Center Board, throw your hands up. Okay. Um, any know? Or any abstentions? Okay, great. Ashley, congratulations. I will pass your information on to Jody.
And John, I want to talk to you about it and get that date and whatever for the first meeting. Thank you.
Perfect. Awesome. Okay, so does, the next one is to designate truant officers. Mike, do you know some about this? Would you mind speaking to that?
Sure. Unfortunately, we have students who aren't in school and we have to follow Vermont statutes, uh, in following up with students. And at some point, there, there is mandated reporting that we have to do that for, for students who are an absent, who are absent in, in an unexcused manner. Uh, and that's normally handled by the building principals, uh, that reporting.
Okay, so like, so what we, our recommendation is, is to, um, have the building administrators be the truant officers. We do have sort of.
Megan and.
Well, it would be every building. So every, right, every, a principal in every building would be the truant officers. We, we could say principals, right? Kelly, do you want to, would you like?
Being broad because it could be an assistant principal or it could be a co-principal, but it would be.
Building administrators?
I think, yeah, that keeps it.
Okay.
Okay.
I moved to elect building administrators as designate, uh, or no, I moved to designate building administrators as truant officers.
I'll second that.
Ashley seconded that. Um, is there any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of, of designating the building administrators as the truant officers, go ahead and raise your hands. Okay, um, is there anybody opposed? And anybody abstaining? Okay, so that will pass. Our last motion for reorganization is to designate the newspapers of record. So typically, uh, when things, we have to have newspapers that, uh, we post things in, policies and other required things. So we, and they have to be accessible to all of our towns. So, um, we recommend designating the Valley Reporter and the Barrymont Pillar Times Argus as the designated newspapers of records. Would anybody like to make that motion? It has to be in print. So for example, um, anytime we do a policy for warning, it, we have to put it in the paper.
So Waterbury Roundabout doesn't come, because they don't have.
So it used to be the Waterbury Reader. Then when they stopped going to print, we had to find another newspaper to take its place. So there. Yeah, it has to be a printed paper. Do you want to unmute yourself, Bobby?
It's off, but, okay. Cause I turned my other thing off.
You want me to, you want?
I can read this. I know.
Okay.
Hold on, let me.
I would like to move to designate the newspapers of record, be the Valley Reporter and the Barrymont Pillar Times Argus. Second.
Is there a second? When we're all in person, we don't, we won't be echoing like this. So, um, Cindy seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of designating the Valley Reporter and Barrymont Pillar Times Argus as the newspapers of record, go ahead and raise your hands. Okay. Um, is there anybody opposed? Okay, anybody abstaining? Okay, that will pass. Before we go to approve the agenda, I just want to mention real quick that Jeswin saw that you were in the paper. Or he is one of our senior student reps. We have four of them. We have two seniors, two juniors. And you won the American Legion Award, right? For, yeah, tell us about it real quick, because I was so excited to read that.
Oh, totally, yeah. So, um, I've been doing this program since freshman year, but, um, so basically, it's the American Legion Oratorical Contest where I prepare an eight-to-ten-minute memorized speech on the duties and obligations one citizen has to our government. And then I prepared for three-to-five-minute speeches that are drawn at random on the amendments of our constitution. So for this year, it's the Sixth Amendment, the Tenth Amendment, uh, Section One, the Sixteenth Amendment, and then the Fourteenth Amendment, Section One. So, um, I did that and it was, um, a couple of weeks ago in Montpelier, the pavilion, uh, where orated and presented. And so I won first place in that competition. And so now in April, from the twenty-first to the twenty-third, I'll be going on to represent Vermont, um, in Indianapolis.
Oh.
Thank you.
That is so awesome. That is so exciting. So congratulations. That's huge.
Yeah, thank you.
That is awesome. Okay, so our next thing is.
Just want a quick question?
Yeah.
Do you have to prepare new speeches for that, Jeswin?
No, no new speeches.
Oh, phew.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, so to continue on, we don't have that much left with our agenda. So, uh, the next item would be to approve the agenda. I would just be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Don't jump all at once. Bobby?
Right, I move to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? Is there any objection to approving the agenda? Okay, the agenda will pass. So the next item will be public comments. Okay, um, is there, if anybody in the public would like to speak, um, for public comment, you'll have three minutes to speak on any topic. If, um, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, I'll let you know that you have thirty seconds left. And at the three-minute mark, I will let you know that your time is up, so we could move on to somebody else that might would like to speak. And if, um, you have more than, uh, time allows to tell us, that we encourage you to email the board at C N dash H U S D board at H U S D dot org. I think I got that right. So, um, if there's anybody, we don't have anybody in the room that would like to speak for public comment, but if you're on Zoom and would like to, um, go ahead and, um, raise your hands. And I see you, Brian. I'm just getting my timer set. Just one second. Bear with me. I was almost prepared. Um, one second. Okay, let me just, okay, Brian, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you.
And you can go ahead.
All right, I'm here to talk about restraint and seclusion policy once again. Um, it's been about a full year since I first brought it to the board. Um, so I am here again to encourage the board to move quickly on this topic and get it written into policy to ban, um, prone restraints, supine restraints, and seclusion. And in the year since I've been advocating, um, and since our last board meeting, uh, we've been lucky enough in Vermont for Teresa, Representative Teresa Wood out of Waterbury to introduce, uh, bill in Vermont Legislature. Um, and with that, uh, you know, we're seeing more, um, we're going to see more media attention. Um, more advocacy groups getting involved. And I think passing policy will, um, show that Harwood wants to be a leader in this and that we're taking it seriously. And once again, I thank, uh, Dr. Licklider, that, um, for the moratorium. Um, I think that's a great first step, but, you know, some fears with moratorium is that, um, it's not board policy. So, you know, that brings some limitations to it, you know, for example, if, you know, what if a, a prone restraint were to happen in the Harwood Unified Unit School District and a parent wants to bring a complaint? You know, there's no board policy which would limit your involvement, um, with kind of accountability, uh, for the practices that are occurring in the school. So I'm hoping that policy passes. Again, I think it'll be a great step to show the state and show the advocacy groups and, uh, that we are going to be a leader on this topic. And we haven't seen really any research or evidence showing that prone or supine restor- prone or supine restraints are, uh, safe to use in elementary schools. And we haven't heard publicly from anybody speaking in favor of them. So I think it should be pretty smooth sailing moving forward for the, for the board to hopefully vote to pass a policy in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Let's just double checking. Yeah, I don't see anybody else that wanted to speak during public comment. So last thing is communication. So for new board members, typically what we do is we just do a board recap of what happened um, at the meeting. So I know that Cindy is, um, down to, to do, like, edit it. So we would need a writer and it's pretty easy. I said, usually what happens is I'll send people the, uh, minutes and the template, plug things in, super easy to do, has to be back to me by Sunday night, so it can be posted. I think so. Yes, I think so.
I think you had me down as the writer, but.
Oh, you, the writer? Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad to do that. That's what I was.
And so we just need an editor and the editor is just to make sure, you know, they got all the information. So does anybody want to do it?
Can you remind me, Kristen, what, before, were we doing like editor and then you'd be the writer next time or was it?
Yeah, and what I was trying to see is, because I know, because life, I know that you edited the last time and you've been doing it. And I think you've signed up subsequent times. So I was just going to see if anybody else wanted to do it. But typically, if you're an editor before, you would be the writer the next time.
I can be, I can be the editor this time and that's.
And Marlena, though, that you would be the writer for the next board meeting recap if you sign up.
Is that written in stone?
That's, that's, that's kind of what we do to share, to share it. If you don't, if you don't want to sign up for it this time, that's fine. We can, some, you know, somebody else could. But if you, if you're, say, you're going to be the editor, you're committing to be the writer the next time. Do you want me to take you off?
No, I'll do my best.
Okay. Okay. And I send a template, so it's really easy. And it's, it's really easy to just plug things in. Okay, perfect. So that's it. That's all the things I have on the agenda. We do have a regularly scheduled board meeting for, oh, Tori, go ahead.
I just wanted to request that you send the spreadsheet for signup on editor/writer out again, if you could.
Will do. I can definitely. I don't handle that. Central Office does. But I'm, yes, yes, thousand percent. You, yes, I'll mute myself.
And for, for all but, for members, but particularly new board members, uh, if you go to the district website and click on the board tab, uh, one of the items on the right-hand side is the list of current board members. My, my assistant, Alyssa Diablo, keeps that online. And your name, your town, your email, uh, your phone number, and everyone lists, currently has a home phone number listed, as well as the expiration of your term is listed. So if you could take a moment, uh, before you close your computer tonight to just check that information. And if you have any updates, if you could let me know, we'll update that information on the website. Uh, but that's how the community can get, uh, access to your information and contact you if they have questions. It also lists the, the email address that goes to all board members on that website. So click on H U S D dot org, board, and then on the right-hand side down the list, you'll see, uh, board members.
Okay, excellent. So the other one quick thing is that typically board packets go out on Friday. And because we have our reorg meeting today, that's a quick, very quick turnaround. So be looking for the board packet on Monday, the twentieth, I think it is, will go out. And when we talk board packet, we've been streamlining everything. So it's going to be an agenda with hyperlinks to everything that you will need, all the information, all the information you're going to need for that meeting. Any other questions before we hit the road for the night? Okay, always feel free to reach out. Anybody has any questions? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second, okay, anybody opposed to adjourning? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, we'll see everybody next week, six o'clock, Wednesday, library. Have a great evening and weekend, guys. Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.